We're gonna go back to the start. Good morning, everyone. I am David Paul. I am Director of Member Services and the Council of Latesford Chamber of Commerce. I have the pleasure of hosting this morning. So, on behalf of our members, for the staff, all the candidates, forum, our mission at the chamber is to strengthen businesses, build partnerships, that promote economic growth, community development. We pursue our mission by partnering with our members, local organizations, and community leaders, including the city of Council Plus. Local elections are important. We are proud to make this forum possible. I'd like to start by thanking members of each sponsor, Advanced Southwest Iowa. Advanced Southwest Iowa is a local nonprofit economic development organization for Potawatomi County. Advanced Southwest Iowa Corporation is sole focused business protection and retention entrepreneurship site development. And this is an extremely important and highly effective driver of economic development in Council Plus and Potawatomi County. We are fortunate to have them leading this critical work in our county and grateful for their responsibility to make this forum possible. I also want to thank the Council of Spiny School District for hosting our forum today. And a special thank you to John Stile and his staff for the assistance setting up our A D E. Thank you to all the candidates for stepping up forward to serve our community. Running for elected office, significant commitment. And on behalf of the chamber, we are grateful for your willingness to serve our community in this capacity and for taking the time this morning here. Finally, I want to thank the Daylinon Correll. We partnered with the Non Correll to inform voters through our 2025 City Elections Voter Guide, which is available on the public website, councilofiowa.com. It's also located on the outside of the front doors there if you want to grab one. The voter guide provides important election information and candidate responses through the chamber and non-correll questionnaire. The Non Correll also graciously offers to facilitate each of the candidate forums we are hosting throughout the primary and general election. Please help me thank the Non Correll for their partnership and these efforts to inform voters in this state conference. Again, thank you all for being here. Let's get started. Please help me welcome the moderator for today's forum, Bill Taylor. Bill is the former president of the Omaha World Herald, former general manager of the Daylinon Correll, and currently serves as Vice President of American PCS Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Jacob. And good morning, everyone. As Jacob said, I am Bill Taylor and I'm honored to be here with you and our city council candidate. And I'm honored to be here with you and our city council candidates. Before we begin, I want to give a shout out as Jacob did to the Non Correll and the Council Plus Chamber of Commerce for providing an opportunity for you to hear directly from the candidates about their views, priorities, and plans for the future of our city. To ensure the forum remains productive and secure, we ask for your cooperation. Please refrain from interruptions, outbursts, any behavior distracted from the discussion. Civil dialogue helps all of us better understand the choices before us. The candidates on this stage are also our date. Each of them has stepped forward willing to serve our community and they deserve our courtesy and our respect. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to introduce themselves before we enter the questions here of the vote. The questions have been determined in advance by the Non Correll with the goal of providing information on topics that are most important to voters. Candidates will have a few minutes to respond to each question and each candidate will have the opportunity to answer a question first. To keep us on schedule, there will be someone with a signet, then it will be in the front row here to signal time limit, candidate, and to be. Candidates, this will be discussed before you grab your seat on the stage. The yellow signet will signal if you're approaching your time limit. A red signet means you should wrap up the pod, that is, please finish your sentence if you can. If you do continue speaking, I will interrupt your answer to ensure each candidate receives an equal amount of time to give. We've asked the candidates to keep their remarks civil and to refrain from directing comments or questions at one another. So we can get to as many questions as possible, we will not have the candidates provide follow-ups or rebuttals. At the conclusion of the predetermined questions provided by the Non Correll, each candidate will have 90 seconds for closing said statement. We'll then do a very brief wrap. Before we get started, I did want to say you'll notice there is one seat empty. Ryan Garrison, who is running for city council, might be here. Unfortunately, we received an email early this morning that they were paying the emergency, so he wouldn't be able to take it. So thoughts are with Ryan. Hopefully, everything is okay. Thanks again to our city council candidates for your willingness to participate and to each of you in the audience for showing up and to the chamber and the Non Correll for hosting such an important event. All right, we ready to get started? I didn't sound very good, did I? We ready to get started? It is Saturday, the college football Saturday, so you gotta get one done. We did conduct a random drawing to determine who would receive the first question. So we'll start with Joe. Joe, homelessness in Council Plus has increased, but crime is actually down in the city. What do you believe is the relationship between the city's unhoused population, crime, and residents' quality of life?
There is a problem in Council Plus with the homeless and I do have a plan, I'm gonna get elected, but it's gonna take all, everybody to work together. It's gonna take the police, it's gonna take the hospitals, it's gonna take the council mayor, everybody work together, try and solve this. Yes, crime is down, but there still is a major problem and y'all need to figure out a problem. Follow-up, there's programs to help, but nobody's following up after the programs are there, so. And I just feel this, yeah, work together, that's what's not happening. You have these people doing this, these people doing this, they're not working together to follow up and come to an conclusion, a solution to help the people. And I just feel that's the main issue, working together as a team, not individually, because people are homeless, correct? Thank you.
Okay, good morning, everyone. I'm Jessica Baker. Or the speaker, we'll figure it out. I'm Jessica Baker, I have the plus for nearly 30 years. I graduated at J A, I'm not allowed to can you, it's crazy. I'm a Council Western and I have worked for this hospitality for eighteen. I understand homelessness is a hot topic, it's an important topic, and it does really impact the housing availability and the crime rate is down as far as the latest statistics. City council is not the ones who solve homelessness. We are not the ones to solve the housing crisis. We are here to support the organization's job. It is to provide those services. So back to my, so city council's role is to support the organization. We support them through passing policies and ordinances that help them in their job. Homelessness is not a one size fits all, there is not one solution, and we really have segments and focus on each individual person as they are divisible. And then that goes hand in hand with perfect, great, and our housing stock. But I appreciate you, I appreciate that call here, that you're jumping up.
Hi, I'm Lily Brown, I'm a creative and recent. I am a mom, that's my first word title. I also work for the Council of Fair Commerce, this is the second since I sent our president here. And I also run our recovery club. My heart is rooted in service, being able to serve my church, robbery, and serving this energy every day in the work of the chamber. But for me, the natural nature of that was running for state council to be able to serve us in that way. When it comes to this, I think it's important to recognize that that is a nationwide issue. It's not that just Council Plus is like, and it still has to work from the top down. It'll be an ongoing issue. I think that we already, we have good work going on in our community already and we have a few of those partners who are already releasing work interestee. I want to reiterate something that I heard from people when talking about homelessness, that homelessness is not a crime. And I think a lot of times people think that crime is attached to homelessness and it's not. So that, quite interestingly, is still homelessness. I think we need to have a balance of passion and accountability, but you have to be with compassion and love. We have to remember that people who are in the unhoused population, they're our neighbors, they're still present in the area. We are unfortunate to have homeless and they're not, and I think that's on us. And it's our responsibility to protect vulnerable inner community.
How about now? Hey, everybody, my name's Cole Button. I'm a third generation resident in Council Plus. My mother graduated from this school, my grandmother lived here for over 50 years, and after I finished college by the state, my wife and I decided to come down here, come over here and set up our here as well. My mother worked in finance, my father was law enforcement, and after working for years in banking and studying small businesses, I decided to make a career change and went into public safety, served as a police officer, and now I work as a correctional officer for your confidence at the jail. So if anybody's thinking they might recognize me from somewhere, that might be it. So I want to start by saying that for homelessness, we absolutely have to prioritize public safety. Public safety has to come first. I worked at the jail, a lot of the people that struggle with mental disease, you know, poverty, homelessness, substance abuse, a lot of them have known that the jail would be. I worked with these people for 12 hours a day. And the homeless community is like every other community, it has its good people and it has its bad people. And we want to make sure that we have support for those who want it, want to improve their lives and get out of this situation and accountability for those who don't. Working in jail, a lot of things that I've seen is that there are good people in this community, but we have to balance that with keeping the community safe. We cannot let our parts in public space become homeless camps and let them become overrun. We have to make sure that we keep the public space safe for people, for their families, for their kids. The HOP team at Council Plus is doing amazing work and I want to make sure that they have the support, resources, and officers that they need to increase control of the necessary areas all your time, so.
Good morning, everyone, and I want to thank everybody for taking time out of your day today to kind of listen to our ideas about the future of Council Plus. I want to thank the chamber, Bill Taylor, and Non Correll for providing this opportunity to share our ideas. And a little about myself, I was born and raised in Council Plus. I graduated from St. Aubrey High School where I met my wife. We've been married 41 years. She spent 33 years as a schoolteacher in this community. I left high school, went into the electrical trade, became a journeyman electrician, and then into the fire department in my 30 years, 30 years as a firefighter in Council Plus. Homelessness is a nationwide, statewide, and community-wide tragedy. We have not dealt with homelessness in a real manner, in my belief. I hope to open this community to protect the lives and properties of the citizens of Council Plus and homeless people are included in that group of people. I have ideas to create a metro-wide, because this is a metro problem, triage center where we would work hand in hand with our HOP program that's out there working daily, going out to service the peoples and bringing the services that they need where they're at. We need another facility or a homeless mental health triage center where we can bring these individuals, detox them, de-lysum, give them effect, get them on a trajectory where they can be on a path of success. We can do that much cheaper in a triage center. We won't be taking these individuals like we've done for the last 40 years to the emergency room or to jail. We'll give them another option. This can be your answer. This will pay our county, it will pay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
My name is Dustin Ayers. I was born in Council Plus, I lived in the West End for most of my childhood. I came back to go to school here, a police officer here 24 years, 70 years of that as a detective. From day one, as a police officer, we were dealing with the homeless issue. I think we all remember decades ago that there were only a few homeless people that we all knew and it's just every year, there's more and more people coming into town. The police department, back in the day, if we had issues with them, we were allowed to go in there and immediately clear them out of the area and if there were crimes being committed, we were allowed to arrest. I think holding people accountable for their actions is very important. Public intoxic is gonna be an issue, but if they are hopefully committing crimes of theft, burglary, public nudity, that should not be tolerated. We also need to start working with the shelters to require an ID, help them get an ID, and create a photo file of any subjects that if they do not have an ID, so we know who's in our community and who we need to keep an eye on. We could also work with the police department to run their information and check for people that are failing to register as a select offender or any warrants that they might have. Part of my plan is, once we start this increased scrutiny, that some of the people will voluntarily leave, like they voluntarily left Omaha. They don't want the scrutiny, they don't want help, they don't want drug treatment, and they're all coming here. I found out through numerous people contacting me that some of these people are being bused in our community from Omaha and Sioux City. They know that, they do.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Benjamin Larson. I am a 33-year-old person paramedic. I have been serving my communities in healthcare now ever since I was 20, when I originally became a paramedic for emergency medicine systems and began working as a night watch in a facility within Auburn and Fall City. Right now, with we discuss the homelessness issue, this is a, may not simply a community-wide problem, but this is also a nationwide problem. We are seeing a massive growth and uptick in the number of people, regardless of what city, state, town, or ruler, city, region that it is in. We also have many different groups and organizations, like the Firefly Young Mother Association, that is seeing a stark doubling in the number of homeless, single, and parents that are also now attempting to raise their children on the streets as well. America, for the last over 40 or 50 years, has simply been criminalizing homelessness. They have been arresting them, shoving them out, forcing them to cities that actually have policies and programs to attempt to uplift them. And as we have seen over the last several decades, not only have these systems failed, but they also have constantly caused even more economic strife as they continue to criminalize these people and continue to load the cost on the taxpayer. Thus, plans like Steve Gorman's plans are necessary and also we need to have a more comprehensive and holistic plan for actually solving this issue as well as centralizing resources, so that way these people can actually get the help that they need.
Okay, thanks, everybody. For those of you paying attention, you may have noticed that I already violated the parameters I set for the forum. So we were supposed to start with nobody statement. So we're gonna go back and do that. This is a very brief opening statement. They've already somewhat introduced themselves, who they are and why they're running. And we're gonna start with Joe again, because that was where we originally gonna start. So we'll quickly, candidates, my apologies, we'll start with Joe and Jessica, and then Rain.
My name is Joe Hommer. I've lived in Council Plus for 50 or 52 years of my life. I'm a small business owner for the last 11 years. I live with a family, I have one daughter, four grandchildren, and I'm running for city council because I see a lot of things that need to be changed or worked on or advanced or made better. And I was always not growing up that you're part of the problem or you're part of the solution. If you don't know what the solution, you can't complain about the problems. So that's the main thing I want to run and I want to thank everybody for showing up and for, thank you.
Oh, hey, there we go. Good morning, again. I'm still Jessica Baker. I already went over, I've lived in Council Plus for nearly 30 years. Graduated from Thomas Jefferson High School, went to Iowa Western for a hot minute. I have worked for incentive hospitality for, I'm in my 18th year. I started to become involved in Council Plus through joining various committees, excuse me, creating initiatives to support small businesses and joining boards that align with my values. I joined the Council Plus Chamber Board because I have a passion for our business community. I joined the 712 Initiative Board because I have a passion for redevelopment and revitalization. Our community is very important to me. I'm not running just because I care, because we all care. I'm running because I have been involved. I have been having the conversation and I have been listening. I feel that I can provide a balance between our community and the city. I am a little child and I've worked in hospitality for a very long time. On click resolution is my second anchor and I appreciate your time and your repentance and thank you so much.
Okay, I did a little bit of my intro and my previous answer, but a few more things about me. I did say that I'm a mom through kid and they are 12, nine, and seven, and they come to us through the strength and their favorite part of the campaign so far is the yard signs. Arguing about whose turn it is and then how to make changes in the pace throughout the city as we drive around. So it's really cool to get to explain the process of what council is to them and just how the voting process works. I think that's a great thing to instill in our children when they're young, when they're older, basically important. Things like this, so they can get informed and order. I am a transplant to the area, returned years ago, and I think that gave me the unique experience and perspective that I can bring to the city council. We are trying to attract other people and move in life here and call it home because that's how our city will grow and I believe I can bring that perspective. That is part of my story. I have built strong relationships with the partners over the last few years working in the chamber and I believe that I can use those relationships who are collaborative collaboratively with those partners to achieve success for our city.
Well, like I said, my name is Cole Button. I'm a third generation resident in Council Plus. I currently work as a correctional officer at the sheriff's office at the jail and I'm also serving my second term on the county compensation condemnation board. I'm running because working in public safety, I see a lot of the challenges that our city faces every day. A lot of the problems facing with homelessness, mental health, substance abuse, they get done off on us up to jail and I work very closely with those all the time. And I'm running because I want to make sure that we make the city more business friendly as well, so we can have more support for not only our big businesses, but our small businesses as well, coming from a business and financial background that's important to me. And I'm running because I think we need a new perspective from the next generation. The population of Council Plus is aging out and we need to focus on not only adding housing, affordable housing, but also entertainment options as well if we want more young people around my age to come to Council Plus, build their lives here and stay here for the long term. With my background in finance and public safety, I think I bring both the technical skills to handle our city's budget and the first and, feel more of the firsthand experience of our issues. Thank you.
Once again, my name is Steve Gorman. I'll just be brief, I ran four years ago, when I first ran for council, I'm retiring from the fire department, to bring more density into the city of Council Plus. We haven't grown our population since I was a little kid in this community. It was in the 70s, this population was around 50 some thou, 58,000, close to 60,000. Now it is over 62,000. We clearly haven't grown the population base that we need to be able to afford our community. Our budget right now is very tight. Our levy is maxed out. They have just a little bit of room left for what they do. When the state comes in and sets the tax policies and our evaluations to our properties are evaluated by our Potwatomi County, it raises everyone's property taxes and the last thing I want to do is price people out of their homes. So I've worked very hard to bring people into this community. I want to run, I want to... I wanna run, I wanna bring in about 1,000 people a year and create housing needs that we need as support. Thank you.
Again, my name is Dustin Harris. Police officer for almost 24 years. I'm running because I think that there are some issues that we need to deal with more effectively. I think that there's a stigma that we have, if you drive up and down West Broadway, it's, you know, you see the homeless individuals pass out of properties. It just doesn't look good for the city. If we really wanna bring new businesses, the residents into our city, I think that this needs to be addressed. I would like to, you know, work with those in the homeless community that do wanna work. We could provide help through parks, or through the streets division, you know, get them working again, get them feeling a sense of pride, maybe, you know, get them to turn their life around. Also, wanna go after some of the derelict properties that we have around town, which there are many, that for some reason, you know, they've never been up to code. And I think that we need to make those safer for people, and if the owners don't wanna fix those properties up, then we could go in, we can tend them, instead of one initiative or one of the many groups we have in the city, get those fixed up, and provide housing for people that wanna be sober, that wanna work, you know, that have an emergency or a fire, and they aren't able to work, and provide for their families, we can give them a temporary place to stay. Thank you.
Like I said, my name is Benjamin Larson. I could regale you with many stories of working within EMS and 911, especially in rural America. I could also regale you with dozens of stories of working ICU as a nurse and a cardiac technician all throughout the open epidemic, the enormous cost of life that it was, the number of families that we had to bury, all of the choices and all of our decisions that we had to make during those years. I could also regale you with stories about the number of communities I've attempted to join, all of the work that I've attempted to do for Auburn, Falls City, Omaha, Springfield, all of these different small towns that I have been a part of in my journey through medicine. But at its core, what I want to impose into all of you is that, as a transplant, as a Iowa Western reemer, again, as a nurse, that regardless of the fact that I am sitting here, I believe, shows my love for these communities, and my commitment to all of you to try and actually solve these issues in a new, fresh and engaging way. All right, again, audience, I wish I could say there was a method to that madness, but it was just a mistake, so appreciate your patience, but the same to the candidates. If one of the criteria you're judging the candidates by is flexibility and creativity and ability to pivot, I think they all pass the fine code, so apologies again. This second question will be directed to Jess first, and the question is, it can be difficult for people who want to live in Council Bluffs to find a home, buy, or rent, which also contributes to homelessness. Do you support the city's efforts to add housing, or is there a better way?
Thank you, Phil. I want our city to grow, and not just want, our city needs to grow. We need to attract residents to help with our tax base, so that in the future, five, 10 years from now, we are not having to cut services. I do believe we need to grow in a way that works for Council Bluffs. I believe that we do need to explore development options. Our rental vacancy rate right now is at 1.7%, and our owner occupied is at 0.6%. 5% is where you start to see homeless happening. 80% is ideal, and I feel that there are opportunities that we could explore for development options, to add housing units. And I would like to explore more than just adding in apartments for single family. There is an organization called Missing Middle. They go into a city, and they're currently in the Blackstone district, actually, and they evaluate what you currently have in your city for single-family units and apartments, and they find the missing middle piece that you could add in in addition to. I feel that growth is necessary, and adding in those pieces would really help attract the younger generation. I also believe in revitalization of houses in our neighborhoods, to make our neighborhoods the more viable places for families and residents. And yes, so I do feel we need to grow and develop.
Better? Okay. When I launched my campaign, I had a survey that I put on my website for people to fill out, so that I could hear probably the residents, their concerns, and I don't think it surprises anyone that housing was the number-one concern from just about every single person that took that survey, so it definitely is something that we need to address, and meet the needs of the residents that we have here. Housing impacts our families, our workforce, our schools, and just our overall growth as a city, so that shows just how important it is. I do support the city's effort so far, and I believe we can continue to build on it. Some of the things I think we can do, proactively partner with developers in our city, and expand our redevelopment initiatives that we have, educate and collaborate with employers. We have big employers that have potential to come here, but they have to have housing for the employers that they're gonna bring to the area, and continuing to ensure that we streamline the processes, so when we bring those businesses to the area, they are able to find housing and get those families taken care of. Families in Council Bluffs, teachers, nurses, service workers, retirees, and government professionals, all deserve housing options that fit their lives and budget. And I believe while the city has already great efforts underway, we need to continue with proactive, creative, and collaborative approach to continue the steps that the city has already seen.
Yes, so obviously, housing is a big issue. The city is working currently on building about 1,800 new units that are expected to be completed by 2030, if I keep going in that direction. There's more areas that we could look, continue to expand. Some other areas that I think that we can utilize that help with this issue is, first, zoning. There's some prescriptions that limit people's ability to build smaller homes or guest homes on their property, that I think if we preban them, those, and remove some of those prescriptions, it could make it easier to develop properties on those smaller areas. Second is condemned properties. Like I said, I serve on the county compensation condemnation board. I've served my second term. I understand how condemned properties that sit empty and vacant, bored enough, how those hold back progress for the city and keep us from growing our population. I wanna, I think we need to make sure that we're looking at all the condemned properties and assessing feasibility of either repairing or demolishing and rebuilding those properties, so we can get those occupied and get those contributing tax dollars again. Lastly, we have a great program in the city, the city surplus program, where people can purchase empty lots that are available for a discount, as long as they intend to build on it. We have a lot of empty lots. We need to better utilize that program, we can best optimize those areas. That can also help contribute to building our housing and building our city population.
This is an issue that I've been working on for the last four years. Like I said before, I ran on density, bringing population to our communities, so we can better afford our streets and our property taxes and bill for it. I voted in support of taking art, the funds that were received from the federal government on about 140 some acres down by Manawha, and we're starting a development down in there for affordable housing, housing of all kinds, to support our workforce in our community. Having very low availability for our housing is costing this community greatly. We have businesses, manufacturers, that come to town looking to move into this area, and they don't have the workforce housing available to support what they need in order to invest in for our community. So, this is an ongoing problem that we need to look at. We need to have houses, apartments, and mixed-use developments in the process of finishing, building, and planning as we go forward. If we're not doing all three of these at the same time, then we're gonna continually be behind the eight ball for availability and housing in our community. And if we're not meeting the availability of housing in our community, are rents still up, are property values still up, because we, there's just not the amount of properties for sale that are living in our community. And so, as we go forward, we need to consider mixed-use developments, especially on the west end of Council Bluffs, where we can pull from being next to a major population and bring in housing. Thank you.
You know, I was a police officer starting in the year 2000. We've built quite a bit more affordable housing since then, lots of apartments. I don't think that people in our community were the ones that were getting those, a lot of those apartments. I don't think that adding more is gonna help the situation. As I stated earlier, we need to find out why people are coming here, and we need to curtail that. We can also do like I stated earlier with the derelict housing program, we could renew a lot of the areas where these houses were basically just large houses, and are allowed to fester in the communities, take off lots of problems. One of the ones that I've been talking a lot about, I won't give the address, but, you know, that girl's being trafficked from Omaha that was found there, they had children, have had very bad things happen to them there. When I was there on the search warrant, there was exposed wiring, we broke that up, never got fixed. We need to go in these areas, we need to clean up these properties, we need to provide safe, effective housing for those in our community. We don't need to be bringing people from outside our community in, and we have enough problems when it comes to homelessness. I believe that, you know, more Section 8 apartments is not the answer. They don't bring in a lot of tax money, and they just bring police and fire resources. If we clean up these areas, we clean up the homeless, we'll have less calls on that. We had 879 calls in one shelter last year, and I think that if we clean it up, we'll have, you know, better use of our police and fire and our tax college. And we also need to look into other programs, like veterans, that we can get them housing. Thank you.
Housing sits in a very interesting juncture between several different issues here in Council Bluffs. Speaking from the experience of the last several years, where I was getting my nursing degree, many of the young professionals that I was working with or studying with were actively not able to stay within the city, just because there was such a severe lack of houses that they couldn't actually purchase, and then begin working at different hospitals like Mercy or Jenny Edmondson. Also, at the same time, Jenny Edmondson's expansion right now, the CEO is not very sure if he can even house the necessary experienced practitioners to actually begin operating out of this new expansion. So, going for denser housing is a requirement. Council Bluffs cannot get itself trapped within a sort of suburban trap, where the massive expansion of the infrastructure quickly consumes all the money and the potential tax revenue that we have. So, one way that we can counter this, as well as counter my generation's current fears and concerns with homeownership now becoming this far-off dream that will never be recognized, is through things such as row houses, to gain that dense development structure, to use mixed-use zoning, so that way these people can also run small businesses out of these facilities, and then on top of that, larger, denser constructions, such as apartments in these regions, so that we can gain that better tax base and begin building more money and saving more money for the city, especially for future projects that we wish, but also so that the small businesses can truly begin to bring more vibrancy, and more things, and entertainments, and more personal culture and regional culture that would make people want to stay in Council Bluffs and enjoy their time in Council Bluffs, instead of leaving the city to Omaha for simple entertainment value, or other things that they want to do on their weekends.
Housing is a big problem everywhere you go, not especially, but we've been dealing with it for a long time. And a lot of things I've seen, growing up with my family, my friends, is they couldn't afford their homes, so they had to go to the smaller cities, and they wanted to be in Council Bluffs, they don't come back. So, housing is a problem. We do need housing, but we need housing that people can afford. Houses that are in the suburbs that we all grew up in, a lot of times, they need a lot of work, and we look at, well, these people don't wanna do the work. A lot of times, it's because they're trying to afford to keep the house, they can't afford to do the work that the house needs. We need programs that they wanna help, older couples, younger couples, single couples, single families that wanna rent, purchase a home, to be able to do some of these repairs, and that's gonna help a lot of them, the vacant and brand-down homes. On the apartments, yes, we can need a lot of apartments, but we need apartments that people can afford. The average working guy cannot afford a $1,500 one-bedroom house. We need more affordable. That's gonna get people to stay more in Council Bluffs, that's gonna get people to add extra money to go visit Council Bluffs, and that's gonna be able to do more housing, that bigger companies are gonna be able to come in, to also have the housing for those. It falls on, once again, everybody needs to work together, it falls on tactics, it falls on development, it falls on small business. Small businesses can't afford, being a small business, I bet my stroke was only 11 years ago, because I'm close to losing my business, because I couldn't afford things. So, that's just my thing, we need to work together and start getting stuff that's affordable, and make our neighborhoods good again.
Brandon, you will be first to answer our next question, which is, please give an example of one specific policy, not a general direction, but a concrete example of thing you would have the city adopt.
Working with small businesses and businesses of all sizes at the Chamber, one of the things that I've heard are the frustrations red tape when it comes to getting permits with the city. So, one of the things I would wanna look into is ensuring that our permit process stays streamlined, as new technology and advancements arise. When you hear the frustrations, you know that the city has ordinances and rules in for a reason, but also we're working on the communication between the person who's trying to build a business, either a new building, whatever they're getting their permit for, ensuring that we're communicating to them why those standards are theirs, so we can eliminate a little bit of the pressure. We wanna make sure that the permitting process doesn't push developers and business owners away from our city and to other communities, we wanna make sure we can keep them here. So, ensuring that that process is streamlined, as well as ensuring there's solid feedback with business owners and developers. business owners and developers, so that we continually ensure that we're improving that process as technology continues to advance. Our city apartments, they're in place for a reason, but by using new technology and modern building practices, I think we can meet those standards without adding unnecessary costs in burden to builders and businesses that want to contribute to our community.
So talking to small business owners around Council Plus, one of the common things that Randy said as well is that the city is difficult to do business with, especially when it comes to things like permits, and trying to get businesses to want and where you want it is to be a big headache, and the local governments are more accommodating the businesses in our city, which reduces our competitive advantage in attracting these businesses to come to Council Plus. So first, we need to change the culture and make the city more business-friendly, and I think to do that, we need to establish the task force to pay up the people from the Chamber, Small Business Association, Advance Southwest Iowa, entrepreneurs, investors, and we need to get their perspective to have them look, find, identify what they feel are areas that the city can improve on and where they see the most frustration, because we have to get that information from those perspectives and what their biggest hurdles. I think to do that, I think it would help us get that insight that we need to overcome some of those prescriptions and hurdles, make us more business-friendly, and then if we do that, we can attract more businesses to come to Council Plus, we can better support our businesses here. And on top of that, for our existing businesses, I'd also like to see us promote our local businesses more on our social media pages that the city owns, try to utilize those resources more, as well as business liaisons, to try to help guide business owners that may have questions, may need assistance, but using our resources to help promote and encourage people to come to our local businesses and help them grow and thrive.
I'm going to kind of refer back to the conversation we've been having all morning on homelessness. I would like to work on ordinances going forward that is going to address the problems that we have throughout our business community and our neighborhoods with the homeless population moving through our community and with our shelter. This is going to be a metro-wide conversation we need to have. We need to line up our ordinances with the larger community of the metro, so that when Omaha addresses the situation with homelessness, it doesn't affect Council Plus directly because they will move this direction. We have to have a committee, and there is organizations and committees that are already in place that we can get into and work with. We need better representation, I believe, from the city councils for Empire Lake, Council Plus, Omaha, Bellevue, Pavilion, to address this situation fully. I would like to work with our community and the metro-wide community to develop a homeless mental health triage center and work directly with our police department, which I believe is leading our, leading a whole of the metro area with our program. There are any triages of these individuals that along the river, now we need to bring them into a more affordable place where we can work with them to get them on a stable footing going forward. Thank you.
Like the others have stated, one of the complaints that we have from businesses and people in our community is square code enforcement. I talked to the lady that lives on the west end of town, and she's been having problems with people coming through her property. She has an existing fence, but it's worn out, fallen down, and she said that the police fix her existing fence, that she was going to need to get it fixed. You know, she was pretty upset about that because they had come to her property during the winter, and she has a rock that was sitting in her backyard that had frozen to the ground, and she was out there in the middle of winter crying the rocks out of the ground so that she didn't get a ticket from the city. We have small business owners, we have a new coffee shop on 16th Street, and she had a flag set up to let people know that the business opened, and it had big customers. She was told that she had to remove those because of the code that we have that can't have our flag signs. She had to remove those onto her property, and she was told that they did not do that. I think that we need to ease some of those restrictive codes, especially for homeowners if you're doing a minor repair that's not following electrical or gas or plumbing. I don't think that we need to be getting permits for that, especially we have so many large commercial rental properties that are not receiving the same code enforcement as private ownership of rental properties and also, you know, our own houses in the city. I think that it needs to be applied equally, and I think that there needs to be some easing for anybody that's not a large commercial business to be able to fix their progress. Thank you.
I would also like to circle back to a couple of issues, in particular what Randy and Steve have mentioned, but I do want to build upon these because I have noticed a deeper issue and an undercurrent of a problem that is going on. When I first began even conceptualizing this run, I began asking different questions of different community leaders, including those like First Pastor Troy of the First Christian Church. He detailed to me that the churches in this region have not had a covenant since 2019 where they could pool their resources. I also noticed when I was volunteering with Habitat for Humanity that there was not a lot of communication between different districts and different details. I've also seen from discussions with other people, as long with landlords and small business owners in this region, that they find coding and getting permits for different things to be particularly bodacious and difficult at times. This speaks to me not simply an issue of code or an issue of how do we get different things done, or how do we simplify some of these plans, but it's also a problem actively of leadership. And at a time where Omaha is trying to criminalize homelessness and will press all of these people out of the city into ours, as well as a time when we are competing with Omaha, which is a massive city of over a million people strong, and we are the minority city, the next people that go into the Council Plus political chambers will need to be strong leaders that have this wider, larger viewpoint across the state in order to properly tackle these issues.
I hear everybody talking about small business and being a small business, there needs to be easier things for small businesses. A lot of things where I started mine was, I didn't know what to do, I didn't know what I was doing. I got slapped on the hands, I got surprised, we got slapped another place to say, I mean, do it. Is, we need to have programs, we need to have something to help smaller businesses, a lot of people that have been retired and want to start a small business that are afraid to and want because they don't know what to do. We need classes or tech schools or something to be able to teach somebody in business or accounting, so they know what to do to be able to start a small business. We need the help from other city, from the city offices to assist in teaching them what to do or instructing them what to do. I've heard everybody talk about, oh, they thought the small business. I've been in the same spot for 11 years, and not one time has anybody running for any office of the city has stepped into my business to put a sign, to ask any opinions, or anything like that. We need to involve all the small businesses that are out there in the city and help do things to help other people start small businesses. That's what most communities, most communities were built on for small businesses, and that's what we came back to. When I expanded into another smaller city right before COVID, there was things that I had to shut down, and that city council actually brought up my business every meeting to see what they could do to help me to not be able to leave that community. And we need to do something to stay, because I'm here to help people stay and bring more in.
Throughout this process of my campaign, I have been learning and discovering and really trying to educate myself on so many different topics. You don't know what you don't know until you know, you know? I haven't had a lot of conversations regarding any concern of city policies, so I'm going to refer back to a few conversations that I've had in previous months, this year actually. The process to get a permit to have an event in Council Plus, I've heard, is pretty difficult, and there's a lot of restraints as far as closures of streets and making sure the event is safely taken care of. I think some, taking a look at those permit processes to help with these events would be important because having events is an important piece of livability. There is also a question of what is the city's responsibility versus the homeowner versus the business? Recently, there was a water leak break, and it was going back and forth between the city or Waterworth, and it wasn't you, it wasn't me. So having clarification on whose responsibility it is for maintenance of your sidewalk or your street. I've talked to a gentleman who his street is private, but it's not, and they're responsible for their own upkeep of it, even though they're within city limits. So I think some clarification on city versus homeowner versus business. I am open to conversation and willing to learn and discover. Thank you so much.
And to the audience, we appreciate the patience that we have all worked through. Some of the microphone issues, those of you who may have not been on a stage like this, they're all a little bit unique, so thank you, good job, McKenney, for that. If you haven't yet, Cole, you might clap your mic a little bit, that'll potentially take out some of the breakup that I have been here to take. Case point. Cole, this next question is directed to you. First, how could the city improve transparency and communications with residents, especially for budget decision? Are there recent missteps you'd like to see the city avoid in the future?
I have a great point. So we absolutely have to have more transparency and more opportunity for public input with these basic issues. I know a lot of people said that they were frustrated with golf or vote, with how there wasn't a lot of opportunity for public input or hand, or a lot of them didn't fully understand what vote can entail. I think the way that we go about fixing that problem is, when you have things like that coming up, you try to put in as much effort as you can to post as many opportunities for the public to come and ask questions, get a better understanding of the issues, make their voices heard, give their opinion before it goes to the council. I think if you do that, and you give people an opportunity to voice their expressions and maybe gaining insight from the other side, they might have a better understanding of what's going to be coming up, and I think people really like that. I think events like this are a great opportunity. I'm glad that we're doing this, and I want to see more things like this put on by the city and voted on their social media pages and in the non-currel, so people have an opportunity before Council Plus to learn the facts, voice their opinion, and make their voices heard.
Information is very important to everyone. Through this process, it's been very important to me, or very apparent to me, how misinformation travels around, and not a lack of information getting out is the problem for our community. I would like to see more legislative topics possibly for our council and for leaders within our community going forward. We do this with our legislative body from Des Moines, we could be included in some of those or at our own. The city can do a much better job of notifications possibly. We have the ability through hot county and other resources, our city website possibly, to put out notifications of important issues that we're considering in a council. I firmly believe in being transparent, meeting people where they're at. I'm not afraid of phone calls, my phone number is out there, my email is out there, and I do my best to get back to people. Thank you.
I think there needs to be more community engagement. A lot of people have told me that they've given up, they're hopeless when it comes to working with the city on things, that they're not as informed as they should be. I know when the police station boat happened, a lot of people were upset because they didn't know about it. I believe that was put on the city website, but there wasn't a lot of talk about it ahead of time, important people. I think that we already have districts set up for police in the city. We could break up and have meetings at schools individually with these different groups, the city councilmen, where people could come and talk to them, hear their concerns. Since I've started this campaign, I've learned a lot about things that are going on that I as a cop should have known about, but no one's really talked about, and I think that we need to have more community engagement and get more transparency to let people know what's going on in our city, to have more involvement. Our city is a resource of people, they have a lot of information, they could help us out with a lot of things, a lot of older people here that have lived here for a very long time, those people could have information that, you know, high-tech engineers and consultants and other people just aren't going to have. They could help us out and help us change the direction of our city that will most best help our community and city council decide on policies and vote. I think that we should get to work on that immediately. We could also have a website where people could send messages to us that gets filtered out to various people in city government, that we could help answer questions and also get direct information from the people. Thank you.
Like many out here, my personal email is also out in the field, and I have received numerous messages from people from knocking doors and speaking with people directly. I have also noticed, not just simply the people that I door knock with, but also people who have supported me and even funded me directly, that there are serious complaints about how the city actually gets its messages out towards the people. Right now, in particular, one person had detailed to me that there would be announcements across the main page of Council Plus, but no updates across the city's Facebook page or the city's subreddit page, and sometimes different announcements would be listed on different websites, but never within a single unified region, and sometimes not even within on the city's website or calendar. I feel that this is a serious issue, especially when it comes to people wanting to know about larger forum discussions like this one. I also feel that for the nature of transparency, I think it's very important that we have more actual open forum discussion, not simply just a more state, region, or a more auditorium-focused thing. I would like to genuinely be your I would like to genuinely be on the floor with all of you. I would like to bring debate and discussion to you on a board and to have it be an actual community discussion, not simply just a question, not simply just a microphone and a PDA system, but a genuine, we see this issue coming, we have ideas, we have questions, how can we solve and how can we detail these issues?
I like to see a lot better communication. I found a lot more while running this campaign than I ever did living in this community. If I wanted to know something, I had to look it up myself. I found more talking to people than asking questions, me asking questions. Though I agree with a lot of the people out there, we need to add more in the forums, one-on-one, meet and greets, and you can learn more what the community wants. The community can know more about what's going on in the community and they can decide whether or not they want to get more involved or find out more information. But until I started doing this, a lot of places I didn't know where to even go to look. I think we need to promote more information, we need to make it easier and less transparent where there's more information out there for people to decide what they want to be interested in and what they want to call. Thank you.
I think that it is important for city council and members of, or the team at the city to be involved in their community and to be out involved in community or, uh, committees and boards and fundraising events and whatever they can do to just be out in the community. Um, I up until recently haven't seen recent council members involved, um, and I would like to see more of that. I also feel that we need to evolve how we're communicating so that we're attracting the younger generation. I see some younger faces in this crowd. Um, I would like to see a lot more representation, um, from those voices as well. And I appreciate that word that's in here, so don't take that the wrong way. Uh, but I'd like, I, I would like to see us evolve in a way that helps communicate towards the younger generation in a way that they want to actually engage with. Um, I think we can lean more into social media to utilize that more to help get the city's word out, um, cleaning up the website to make it a little bit more user friendly. There are pages and pages and pages that you have to dig through to get to the information that you're looking for. And then the other side of it is you just have to want to be involved on your own. You can't force someone to want to be involved in the city. Um, and so having that information readily available in a way that makes sense for multiple generations, forums for, for, you know, this generation, um, Facebook posts and videos for, for the younger generation or Twitter, whatever you have now. Um, but I think we just need to evolve how we're communicating.
When it comes to transparency and communication, I think that's one of the most important things, um, that we need to focus on for our city. I think throughout my campaign, I realized, as many of you have, that misinformation and negative comments seem to spread faster than factual information and positive things that our city's doing, and that's an issue. Um, I have a lucky background, I'm 10 plus years in heartache and, um, ensuring that we're sharing the positive things and all the good things we're doing, um, and having good people share that, um, is so important. I think sometimes the misinformation and the negative comments that people are afraid they're going to get pulled back the good people from sharing some of the good things. Um, I was recently, uh, asked to be at the roll call event that Iowa West Foundation put on, um, and that was one of the things that our table brainstormed on. It was a table, roundtable type discussion with leaders in the city and, um, they said we have to get better at telling our story. Um, we need to celebrate the ones that we've had here, we need to share the positive information and get that out. So that's what people are hearing and can drown out some of the negative misinformation that's been spread. Um, but I do want to say the tables of leaders that we had there, we put together actionable steps to make this happen. So that's something that you guys will see roll out. Um, that can definitely be something that's part of the city, but I want to let you know that the community partners are already working on how we can put together better communication plans, um, and actionable steps that we are looking to put in by working collaboratively together in that roll call, um, event for Iowa West Foundation. Um, when it comes to city council meetings, I do, they are online and you can watch the whole meeting. I do think breaking it down into digestible, um, pieces that we can share easier, smaller clips, um, the type of media that's being consumed by people, that's what we need to put out.
It is so fantastic that we have eight individuals who care enough about Council Bluffs that they are running for city council and we have seven of them here today. One of the challenges about having so many people care so deeply about Council Bluffs is we aren't able to get through as many questions in forums like this as we would like. Hopefully the questions we've asked have helped you as you made your decision on who to vote for, but we are going to jump now to closing statement. We're going to start with Steve and each candidate will have 90 seconds for closing statement. Steve?
Thanks. Uh, once again, thank you for everyone coming out and making time out of your business schedules to listen to our, uh, ideas and, uh, working towards the betterment of our community going forward. Um, I'm asking you today to, uh, support me going forward in another four years on council. I've worked hard over the last four years to bring more housing into our community, to bring more density into our community, meaning population, so that we can spread out our fact base, uh, throughout our community to better afford it. Um, I have a goal, uh, that I think the city needs to work towards and that's bringing in a thousand people into our community every year for the next 20 years in order to get to a position where we can better afford our roads and, and our schools and our whole community as a whole. I just want to thank, uh, Mitch Chamber and, uh, the non-currell for providing this and I also wish Ryan Garrison the very best with his family and we would be thankful.
I think that, uh, you know, community engagement is very great. Uh, I'm glad that a lot of the people have been sending me messages with information and I think that the most frequently brought up topic is homelessness and crime. I, I've been dealing with this directly for 24 years, talking to people five, six days a week. For reference to these items, I think that I have the best ideas, the best real world common sense solutions for this stuff that'll actually make things better. We have the city allow businesses to come to us instead of having to go to them, they get them into the city. Uh, I believe that that is a very important thing. I believe that we need to bring more people into the city, we need to bring more businesses. We have a lot of vacant lots in prime areas that I think that we need to offer, you know, incentives to get people to get building there now. I think that the renewed resources that, uh, you know, business community, more housing, median to high income that would allow more quickly to increase our tax base. Like they say, our city services are in danger of being cut in the next few years if we don't increase our tax base or, or we're going to have to raise that to nobody wants that. Thank you.
There are two very personal sayings that I have learned over the last decade, decade and a half, that I am essentially etched into my soul at this point. And the first one is that you do not strike while the iron is hot, you make the iron hot by striking. The second one is that you do not ask God for lighter loads, you ask him for wider shoulders. I asked him for wider shoulders when I first began taking care of critical ventilator patients. I asked him for wider shoulders when we began burying families during COVID and I began asking him for wider shoulders when gay and trans friends of mine had to begin walking around this nation as if they lived in a war zone. When I decided to begin running for this candidacy right here, it was because I kept requesting to have wider shoulders, to keep requesting for more strength, to keep trying and to keep pushing myself forward to do better for the ones that I love, respect, and ones that I have never met before. So sitting in front of you as your potential candidate, I asked you not simply just to vote for me, but I asked that you simply help me to gain those wider shoulders. Thank you very much for this time and coming out today.
Well, thank everybody again for coming out this afternoon, uh, for homelessness. Um, I'm running as I was, I've, the state's got a lot of ideas, they got a lot of good programs and I think they can be better and I have plans to make them better. I have plans to bring out more. Um, I want to be the voice for, as I say, the little people, the ones out there that don't speak for themselves. So when you vote, I, I ask for your support for me and average Joe, I'm going to make a difference in his hometown.
Thank you for being here today and spending your morning with us. Um, the decisions that we make today will shape our community for decades and I want to make sure that we're setting ourselves up for long-term success. Um, I want to make sure that the decisions we make are the right ones and not just the easy ones. I believe in being open and honest and clear even when the answer isn't popular. That's the kind of leadership that I would bring the city council. I want our city to be a place where those, our services are strong, families feel secure and small businesses thrive. I'd be honored to earn your trust and your vote. Thank you so much.
I want to echo what everyone else said, thank you guys for taking your morning to become Paris out. Uh, when I chose my campaign slogan, I did it very intentionally. Uh, it's listening, leading, building better together. I think listening first is very important, listening to the residents of Council Bluffs and what they want and what they need. Uh, just because it's not my first choice doesn't mean it's not the right choice for the majority of our city and that's why I will make decisions when I'm on. Uh, I also think we need to listen to city leaders and community partners that we already have here. Uh, my work with the chamber, I've been able to see how we can be so successful when we come together in collaboration. Uh, I believe we already have very strong leaders currently in our city departments and our community organizations. Um, so along with that and the relationships that I've already built with the community partners, um, I believe that will allow me to work in collaboration with them to represent the needs of the people of Council Bluff. Thank you.
Thank you again for everyone for coming out today. Thank you to the chamber and non-currell putting the thought. I really appreciate this and I think a lot of people in the community appreciate getting the thought, good deed to here and this as well. During this campaign, it's been amazing, the level of support from the community and so many people that we talked to, they were happy and excited to see young people and so many people getting interested in local politics and local government. They like seeing young people passionate about the local issues and not discuss what's going on in DC or in Des Moines. Because honestly, what happens in your city councils, in your school boards, those impact your life more directly than what happens in Des Moines or DC. It may not be as exciting or glamorous, but it's probably the most important offices in your daily lives. And I want to make sure that when I'm on the city council, that I'm doing what's right with you, that I'm listening to what you want to say, that I'm hearing you and that we give everybody an opportunity to make their voice heard. Thank you.
All right. Once again, thank you to each of you and to each of our city council candidates for being here this morning. Let's give one final round of applause for yourself and for our city council committee. The next city council candidate forum will be October 18th, it's a Saturday, same place here and same time, nine o'clock. So we hope to see you there, see you here. Uh, with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Jacob with the chamber to give you closing remarks. Thanks again, everybody.
Let's all give the candidates up here another round of applause. Being able to serve our community is nothing appreciated, I think, for being here today. I want to thank all of you guys for being here today and getting informed. That's exactly why we put on this initiative to make sure that we have our community leaders candidates that are willing to serve our community and yourself. Um, again, I want to thank our sponsors for the day of Council West Iowa Core and the day of non-currell for helping us put the thought on. Thanks again to Councilous Community School District for hosting us. Um, I also want to thank all of our community today. Please exercise your right to vote, where to came here today, learn or could be hosting more these forums, as Bill mentioned. They are on our favorite websites, councilousiowa.com, as well as our 2025 voter guide. This has a lot of useful resources like where to pre-heat, vote, how to get registered, a little bit more information about our candidates, so please check that out at councilousiowa.com. Uh, the primary election is Tuesday, October 7th. So again, please exercise your right to vote, encourage your family to vote, it is the right thing to do and it's necessary times. That's all I have, so thank you again and I hope you all have a great day.
Ryan, thanks for being here today.
Hey, you're welcome. You're welcome, thank you. Great to see you.